6th of January, what I would like to do first is firstly welcome members, officers and members of the public viewing proceedings online to today's meeting. Some housekeeping first of all. Firstly, can I remind members and officers, please do leave your microphones on, you join the meeting until you want to comment. Officers can also turn off their webcams unless they have addressing the committee. Once a member has spoken, please do ensure you mute your mic. So it doesn't impact the audio for the rest of the meeting. In terms of officers and members wishing to speak, you can indicate your intention by either the hands-off function or trying your best to catch my attention on the screen. When I do bring you in, please do ensure you unmute your mic, say your name clearly and allow a very brief pause while we ensure you are visible on screen. Once you have spoken, please make sure you lower your hand also. Now, if we can begin, can I advise members that we have received apologies this evening from councillors John Kushner, councillor Calvin Smeadah, together with Mel Clayton. Are there any further apologies that we are aware of?
No further apologies to both chair.
Thank you. Can I ask members if they have any interest to declare relating to the item of the business on the agenda? We are now on item one declarations of interest. So do members have any interest to declare? Okay, with that I have no indications. So if we can proceed, please, I will refer members' attention to item number two, minutes of the last meeting. These minutes can be found on pages one to thirteen of supplementary agenda. This sets out the minutes of the last meeting that was held two weeks ago on Tuesday, oh sorry, not quite two weeks ago, Thursday the fourteenth of January. These are set out on a supplement. Can I ask members, are there any matters arising? I don't appear to have any indications. Mike, at this point, do you have something to say?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Just to advise that obviously, as every report is at our last committee, we had two written questions received via email from members of the public. However, as members will be familiar, both last time at this meeting, we didn't include a formal question time and indeed the questions received do not relate to matters on a published agenda, which would typically not be addressed. So with your agreement and indulgence, officers are presently preparing responses to both of those questions, copies of which together with the proposed responses will be circulated to all of you and including the published minutes from this evening's proceedings as well. So they'll be fully circulated to everyone and obviously then issued directly to the questioners as well.
Thanks, Mike. The members wish to indicate anything with respect to that statement or the committee's sheikhery? No? Okay, in that case, can I move that we approve the minutes? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thanks councillor Banks. Okay. With our move on, I think it's very worthwhile to mention, we did talk about this extensively at the last meeting, but the forthcoming work programme of our meetings, there is still obviously a lot of work to do. Before we do move on therefore to those items of business, I'd like to take the opportunity to outline how the committee will move forward. February and the March meetings. Thursday the twenty fifth of February, we'll see a budget meeting. This is when our next meeting is scheduled and we will consider the budget reports and proposals prior to these being submitted to Cabinet and ultimately the Budget Council meeting for approval during March. In addition to this, I will also ask for an update on officers in relation to budget matters concerning children's services. As we approach the end of the financial year, we'll note that there has been scrutiny of children's services in previous meetings and the findings of the Grand Thornton Report in terms of the value of money, value for money elements indicate the need for this. And also for an update on investor earn activity. Similarly, there were updates relating to council governance issues reported at this meeting. For our twenty fifth of March meeting, we will focus on the accounts and the outward reports as well as receiving updates relating to the work of the company's governance committee. In addition to its future programme of work. Again, as indicated above, any updates relating to governance with issues will also be reported at this meeting. So hopefully that gives members a flavour of what we have on the agenda for February and March. Okay? Are there any comments or come up from members on that programme of work? Okay, I have no indications with that then. I move that we note that and we move forward to agenda item three. This is the governance risk and internal control framework and this will be set out on second supplementary agenda on pages one to twenty-three. Can I therefore refer members' attention to these pages, which comprise an updated ongoing action plan, following our report to the meeting two weeks ago and specifically in relation to a range of governance and key actions as outlined in that report? Before I bring in officers, can I ask the acting mayor to say a few words in relation to progress on this matter? How does that sound?
Thank you, Chair. As you just said, it's been not quite two weeks since we had the pre-scrutiny of this governance risk and internal control framework, when people were obviously asked to look at that report prior to the committee. But we outlined as well that this was a living, working document that would be updated and continued to be progressed as our work, you know, across the future municipal year and beyond is undertaken. Since the last Audit and Governance Committee, it was submitted to Cabinet and approved that report and then obviously was included in motions in respect of full council in respect of that report and also approved there. And I think it's really important that, you know, you don't, and I know that people haven't because I know from speaking to individuals since all of those meetings that, you know, people are taking on board, there's an action plan in the report that work is continuing and for each and every one of us, I think whatever select committee we sit on, we need to be making reference to the recommendations in the report and making sure that, you know, sort of we're following that guidance. I know a member training programme is being developed as well as, you know, sort of individual leaders. When I've met with the leaders, we've discussed the importance of ensuring that all group members, whatever the political party, are kept fully up to date with any changes in process and policy. And likewise, I know the chief exec and committee services are doing the same in relation to staff as well. So as we said, it's a work in progress, a lot of work being done. I'd like to thank all of the staff involved in that and the elected members who've taken part in quite a number of meetings previously and also in the last couple of weeks in respect of making sure that, you know, sort of we're getting this journey right and going forwards that we also make sure that we are adapting it as needed. That's all for now, Chair. As I say, it's only a couple of weeks since it was adopted.
Thank you Wendy. I think that's a very, a very helpful update. I think we've got an indication from councillor O'Brien, so I'd like to take that now. Tricia?
I'd like to really welcome the council training initiative. I really felt I did get very good training myself when I joined Liverpool City Councillor and I know it went on over a number of weeks and consecutive sessions. But I don't really recall having a lot of information about the nature of fraud and corruption, how important it was about the register of interests and so on, which obviously this is something that's going to be a bigger focus of that training. So I welcome that. Thank you.
Thanks Tricia. Do you want to come in there later?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important for all of us. Obviously, the induction training and doing that training, you know, when you first become a councillor, it's really important, but things change all the time, you know, whether that is issues in relation to governance, it can be issues in relation to data protection, it can be changes in the law, you know, stuff in relation to licensing, planning, et cetera. So I know through the leaders and through that training group, looking at, you know, key components that need to be mandatory, you know, for all councillors going forward. So it's not an induction course, it's an ongoing member development programme that will take place.
Thanks Wendy.
Tony, do you want to come in?
Thanks Chair. I was just going to follow on from Wendy if that's, if that's timely for me to do so now. Just, just, just to say very briefly, Chris will come in and talk you through the, the latest developments on the improvement plan. But I think you'll see from that how seriously we're, we're taking this. We've been working very closely with the inspection team. Huge amount of work going on and from a lot of council offices led by Lisa Smith and her team in pulling all of the documentation together to make sure the inspection runs smoothly and that the team have access to all the relevant documentation and information from the council. So a really big thank you for, for the huge amount of work going on on top of the day job there. We've met regularly with the, with the inspection team and I think that dialogue is, is open and really transparent and frank as it should be. And I think really, really importantly, through this really difficult period, the corporate management team and the cabinet are meeting regularly to make sure that senior councillors and senior officers are absolutely on the same page and are giving out the right messages to the organisation, to partners, et cetera, about the progress we're making and to reassure people that it is business as usual despite the inspection and other challenges that we're facing at the council, which is really, really important for the city and of course for lots of the stakeholders within, within Liverpool as well. So I think you, as I said, you'll see from Chris's update where we're not letting the grass grow under our feet at all. As Wendy said at the last meeting, this is going to be a living, breathing document and it is evolving on a daily basis. But it's evolving in a way that's strengthening things and we have a, a series of meetings, including select committees coming up where there'll be further strengthening of the arrangements and implementation of the things that we've set out in the plan and we will keep that momentum going and look forward to, to you and the panel, the, the select committee viewing the progress that we're making and absolutely holding us to account for the delivery of everything in it. So that's all I wanted to say at this point, Chair. Very happy to answer any questions. But I know Chris is going to take you through the, the developments since the last meeting.
Thanks Tony. And I think that's a really important message, the necessity for all of us to be in reflective mode and also understand that regardless of how well we've done in the past, we can always do better, we can always strive for more. Before I bring Chris Walsh in, I am going to actually go to councillor Banks. So apologies Chris, but I can bring councillor Banks in first. Christine?
Thanks for that, Chair. Turn with the ongoing inspection and the pressure this is having on our officers and staff because it's built on work on top of the already work that we have to do. So the anxiety and stress levels are going up. And you did say last term, there's things in place to support this staff. So is that ongoing and are we giving that staff and those officers the support? Because it's a lot of work, their jobs and they're being in part of the investigation.
Chair, I can thank councillor Banks for asking a question on an issue I should have brought up myself. Really, really good question. The, the short answer is yes, we are putting a lot of support in place for staff and I absolutely acknowledge this is a very, very difficult time for people. And, and so that support is, is in place. We've strengthened line management arrangements. We have yesterday at appointments panel confirmed this accompaniment of three offices from the combined authority to support us during this period and take leadership roles within the council on a part-time basis. Two in highways, one in regeneration to strengthen those arrangements. We have a whole series of meetings with staff lined up, starting from tomorrow, working with planning staff but with, with others across the affected areas. And there's been lots of one-to-one support for people who've been involved in the process to make sure they're okay. The other thing to say is, and councillor Banks is absolutely right, given how hard everybody's been working through the pandemic to keep services going, there are some things that will inevitably have to be rescheduled and rephased whilst we're dealing with the immediacy of the inspection. Because I think everybody will agree it's incredibly important we get that right. And so we are looking at prioritisation and myself and councillor Simon are having discussions with other officers and with cabinet about that prioritisation to make sure that we maintain the capacity that we need to, to get the council through this really, really difficult period without individuals or teams falling over. And everybody's working incredibly hard and I, I can't say, you know, too much both how impressed I am but also how grateful I am for the effort going in from colleagues. But councillor Banks is absolutely right, there is a big strain in the organisation and that's why we're prioritising and that's why the support is in place. And we're, we're looking at an ongoing set of sessions with staff to not just support them through the process but make sure in terms of culture change and in terms of building resilience within our teams, there's a collective effort to keep the council focused on the right things and working transparently with integrity running through everything we do going forwards. And we actually see the staff, not just the senior managers as owning that process with us and that's the sort of development work we're going to be doing. And we think that will build staff confidence in, in, in the work that they do and their ability to, to focus on the right things moving forwards as well.
Thanks Tony. I think that's an incredibly welcome set of comments and in your defence, I think the clue was given in some of your early comments when you mentioned in addition to the day job, so I think you had alluded to it, but that kind of commitment to wellbeing and put on that at the forefront of our agenda, I think is really, really welcome because of the host of challenges in terms of our mental wellbeing, in terms of the pressures that remote working brings and kind of how this seems to be in a kind of a non-stop. It always does feel non-stop, but this feels particularly non-stop. So I think those are particularly welcome comments. Apologies Wendy, I believe you want to come in?
Yeah, there's two things ready to complement that. Tony has covered some of them. And we've also worked really closely with our trade unions as well and I think that's really important both to get feedback off them because obviously they may get different feedback to what the management team or particularly line managers in certain departments might get from staff. So we're working really closely with them, you know, for us to put in any support, you know, if they're picking that up from their members. So that's been discussed, you know, at J Chalk and with them and likewise, you know, with the prioritisation of work and workload. And I know I've also discussed with the chief exec and other senior officers, you know, the need actually, you know, we've got some senior staff as well who are also in that position and sometimes it's quite difficult when you're in that role and obviously you're expected, you know, to take a leadership role, but given, you know, what people have dealt with, the pandemic, you know, working, you know, largely right across the Christmas break, just that opportunity for them to be able to get some support as well. We've also spoken because of the sensitive nature, both of the police investigation and obviously the inspection that's taken place, we've recognised that potentially some staff may not feel comfortable speaking within their own departments. I know Max Callaghan and the team, you know, have got a whistleblowing procedure going on alongside that, but some staff may just want to speak to somebody else. So we're looking at how we can also get staff who perhaps just want to speak to other people but not necessarily somebody, you know, within their department because of the way they're, they're feeling. So all of those things, both to support, you know, the, the inspection going on but also to support that welfare running alongside that as well. Also with the leaders, when myself and Tony met with all the group leaders, again, we asked them to pass the message on to all elected members and I know it was mentioned to council and we've mentioned it here before around people being a little more patient during this time because of that work prioritisation, you know, trying to, you know, is that email absolutely needed and necessary? Because we all know when we're all under a lot of stress and pressure, it can just be one little email that sends somebody right over the edge. And that's not to say people shouldn't be, you know, requesting support and work from officers, but it's just sometimes it's looking how urgent is that and, and being sort of reasonable in waiting for a, a response. And all the leaders have taken that on board in respect of, you know, when member queries are coming in and giving that message across to their elected members as well. Because I think that's important. We have a duty of care to each other and we all as elected members also have a duty of care to our staff.
Actually, again, very welcome comments and I think the importance of being open about managing expectations reinforced there. So I think very welcome comments and good to hear those reiterated. Jane, do you want to come in at this point?
Thanks, Leo. Thanks Chair. Yeah, just on that second supplementary report about the faction investment, that's going to regeneration select committee tomorrow. Obviously, we'll keep a very, very close eye on this and just thank yous the officers for working through this. There's an awful lot of recommendations that they've responded to right the way through there, eleven of them. And just to let people know that I had a meeting with the Liverpool Law Society about something else last week and mentioned the faction investment report because they were really helpful a couple of years ago in terms of the SRA and giving us some pointers there. And, and they're, they're more than happy to really help. I'm sure many of the professional bodies will be who have mentioned in the recommendation. I think it's worth mentioning though that for regeneration select, I think we need to be really careful that the delegated power support is very clear. We've got one for tomorrow and it's much, much clearer than it has been ever for a very, very long time, to be honest with you. I'm wondering whether it might be worth me asking specifically for, for that to go back a few years as well to come to the committee. So I talked to the Chair about that and it's much clearer this time and it has gone back over the, over the twelve months. In terms of what Wendy said before about whistleblowing and what the chief executive, I really welcome that. And I think if, if then, and what Maxie Inspector said as well, and it was in the echo, which was good to see. I think the confidence in the city is really picking up now in terms of the, the council and how we respond. The officers, I think, feel, feel more confident now, but that will take some time for that, that culture to really shift. So I think a, a regular reminder of how you whistleblow, both for councillors and for officers, will be welcomed, to be honest with you. And just to show people that we haven't forgotten about this, this isn't a sort of a one-off thing, this is actually a complete change of culture. And also just to, as Christine Banks said before, a lot of officers are stretched so far already and are doing, you know, a good number of people's jobs themselves now. And I think that, that just needs watching very carefully because we have been cut back to the bone in terms of finances and most of them are at home as well. So I think I welcome what Wendy said before about just keeping a very, very close eye on that. Thanks Chair.
Thanks Jane, very welcome comments. Now, I think Chris has been waiting very patiently, so I don't see any further indications. So apologies Chris, but I think very, very worthwhile comments and I'm glad they were made. So if I may invite you Chris to focus through your report please.
Thanks Chair. As I say, it's an update on the, the improvement plan you had at, at the last session on the fourteenth. I've just put in the final column, the sort of position as of today, sort of bang up to date position. So I've numbered each of the items, but as Tricia requested, the last one and Tony indicated, this plan will morph into something a bit different probably for the February meeting. But, you know, it's only been two weeks, so we've used the template that we've got. So just on the additional resources recommended to implement change and some of this is around what Tony's already mentioned, but also on the certain, certain service areas, what we call enough grip. So they've already been considered or in the middle of being considered the business cases by finance, so that's been actions. And the review of the delegated decisions, Jane. We had a meeting, a set-up meeting, what last week I think it was, of all the sort of admin officers that produce these lists and how they're done. So we've had a review and that's going to meet every, every month. So the reality of the way that operates now is you've got this quarterly performance report around governance, which delegated decisions for each directorate is on. So what goes to select committee, you can then ask questions on as you can in the past. But then they get, then get published on the internet the next day. So that'll be the process going forward here. So quite a tight regime. The directorates report on it within their dashboard, but also we will be picking it up at that group meeting or decision admin meeting each week. So for this select committee Chair, the decisions that have been coming through as agreed in the response to the Secretary of State around those areas that have been part of those decisions consulted with statutory officers group, you'll get the first report on that February with those lists. Again, for you to ask questions on and for us to publish the next day. So that's item two. On the formalisation of legislation or group roles, I think we've discussed possibly getting some options about, you know, how the select committee operates and what it looks like moving forward. So maybe that's a note for a future meeting of the committee. I know SIPR and their training and their later on in the action notes indicate various suggestions around terms of reference for the select committee. So maybe Leon, me and you can pick that up and report back into the committee before the AGM if there's any suggested changes. The next one is then on item five and we, I mentioned this at the last session. That member development group is scheduling three dates to meet once a month. And I'll put this in the minutes, but other members can attend as well as members of that group. The dates are going to be held on a Tuesday. We'll send them to Natalie, councillor Natalie Nicholas, who's the Chair. And the suggested dates are the twenty third of, twenty third of March and the twentieth of April. So it's a bit, it's got its own work programme around members' training. One is that in the discussion we had on the twelfth of January with that group, the LJ model code had come out in December. That group of members seemed to like that model code and just asked me to say, look Chris, can you do us a, a note or a report for that meeting in February of the differences between what our code currently says and what the model code says? But they looked in an imprinciple agreement to possibly just adopt that. Also, there was a code of practice about meeting developers. Again, the members were supportive of it, thought they could go into a training programme for members and maybe simplify it a bit, Chris, if you don't mind, was the pitch from the members of the group to say, you know, let's have a choose and don't list we can add to the code. And again, the timeline for this, for a lot of this is getting the paperwork into the AGM. So, you know, you've got a, a new code of conduct, some new training possibly on round around the new code there, so we can get that sorted. And again, even the member and officer protocol needs a revamp because it's been in existence for seventeen, eighteen years and the world's moved on. Never mind COVID in terms of IT and social media, the role members play with that. I've mentioned on eight, the quarterly report. So the first versions you will see of these will be the February meeting, but you'll get a feel for them. The reality is some will probably be in better shape than others, but again, it's starting off in a process. But anyway, that will be the benchmark in terms of obviously being able to scrutinise these documents. You actually approved the template at your October meeting. Comes with stuff like interests being updated, decisions, outstanding audit recommendations, information management, a whole list of, of issues. So you'll see the first versions of them in February and again, you'll be able to influence how they look going forward as members. I mentioned the training programme, working closely with the learning development team. Members will have access to the learning hub, which is what officers use, and those class-based trainings documents Tricia alluded to that we use for induction, et cetera. And seeing on code of conduct, we're going to turn it into e-learning packages. So a couple of them will be going to the member development group in February. So they can start online as soon as they're being approved and members can have access to it. There's then some discussion further on in the note for twelve and thirteen around other agencies such as the police helping out with some training, both for officers and also members. A meeting with an organisation called CFAS and they've agreed to do some presentations and some work around the risk around bribery. And, you know, so it's sort of focused on the main members' roles are. We've got anti-fraud, bribery and corruption e-learning package for officers currently online, which officers are going through. It's mandatory. But I think it needs developing so it's, it's member focused because some of it isn't really relevant for members and there's some bits in there that need mentioning that are relevant for members. So as well as the code of conduct, that's going to be the focus for the first two for the e-learning packages for us. As well as those we can just simply turn into e-learning packages quite easily because the more that goes up, the more trains available online. I've had additional discussion with SIPR and they give us a submission in, but again, Leon, I'd like to speak to you about that in terms of where the package could be tailored for this group of members on this Teams session, for yourself as the Chair and for, for members of audit and governance select committee. Just one other thing to mention on item eighteen in terms of register of interests. You will have received a request from Mike Jones, I think it was the last weekend or the weekend before, to update your registers with the clear guidance both from MHCLG but also ours around, you know, what you need to complete and how, you know, the type of questions you need to answer. So members have had a reminder of that. For officers, we drafted a new form, a more robust declaration form and a two-stage process. So one of it is, is the form goes online and when it gets changed, the old version is kept. But more importantly is it's your line manager that signs it off and puts it up. So that quarterly update on governance is for the the line manager for the relevant member of staff to agree the declaration of interest. One is whether there's any conflict of interest, but also is there any updates each quarter? So there's like a regiment or a regime for that from these quarterly reports. There's some reference to most other agencies like the NCA helping with learning packages. And also a number of training providers were approaching for specific staff. So we'll see some training take place for members. I would have thought the earliest the packages are all out in terms of time scale of getting them loaded up and members' access might be by the end of March, April. in terms of timescale of getting them loaded up and members' access might be by the end of March, April. Certainly by, by May, if we can have the revised code approved at the AGM, the training packages could run off the back of the AGM, which has been the way we've done the induction in the past, in which members get invited to, which is our, our regular sessions over six or eight weeks. Um, the risk assessments, as mentioned there in terms of the directorates. Um, we've actually, in terms of risk, the way the corporate risk registration, the director of risk registers operate, they will also be in this quarterly performance dashboard that you get. So again, members will be able to see what type of risk are being highlighted by directorate, by directorates. Um, and the last one, I think, on the list from the updates I did for you, uh, earlier on, Chair, members, was what Jane just said, the fractional investment report update goes to regeneration tomorrow. Um, and obviously that, that, that group of members can ask questions. Thank you, Chair. That's the update. Leon, your own views?
I'm here to at least want some apologies, um, just to know that downstairs, Chris, certainly from a member's point of view, it feels like this is moving. It does feel quite tangible. You've mentioned some of the emails we have received, so we do feel as if that this programme is moving forward. So I would thank you for that. Um, councillor Jennings, there was an indication from yourself, um, do you wish to speak?
Uh, if I may, uh, just a very quick question about member training. And we, in, on health select committee, we use the Centre for Public Scrutiny, um, ten questions guides, and they were incredibly helpful. Um, and I was just thinking, have you, um, kind of embedded any of those into, into any of the member training going forward? Is there stuff around audit and finance? I haven't actually looked myself, but it just struck me that they could probably do it. At least a very basic overview for new members, certainly.
If I can, Chair, yeah. Uh, SIPF do a lot of training around all of the committees. Uh, they're seen as the sort of, I wouldn't say market leader, but that's the body that's got the, the credentials. Uh, I have received quite a lot of information from SIPF, but, uh, we just need to tailor it to what we think we need to do here with the committee. And other members can be invited, but, you know, it's a focus on the role here for yourselves and others. And Leon's already, sorry, the Chair's already spoke to me, you know, getting some options together about how the committee goes forward. And that will come forward probably at your last meeting in the municipal year, some options, which again, can feed into any changes at the AGM. Thanks, Chair.
Bring Wendy in before Malcolm.
Yeah, it was just specifically on that, uh, point that Sarah just raised. I think it's really important, as you say, that we look at any tools, um, that are at our disposal. Certainly, you know, as Chris has mentioned in his report and was mentioned at the last committee as well. Obviously, we are liaising with professional bodies and the LGA, but sometimes the, you know, because other councils are obviously have adopted, you know, policies as well. But sometimes if people come across things, and that's why we're saying it is a work in a living document. So, you know, if people are aware of other things that they feel it will be useful, you know, certainly pass it in, you know, to Chris and the team or to the member, um, development team to have a look at and adapt. Because as, um, Chris was saying earlier, and I know sort of, as we mentioned a, a lot for the meeting, people don't want lots and lots of different documents that they've got to use. The most effective thing is to have a simple checklist, as you say, you know, ten points or a do's and don'ts list that people can, you know, frequently refer to if they're unsure, till it, it just becomes, you know, um, habit in your behaviour to do. If, if people, particularly if people are new, and then just to, uh, refresh that for people who've been councillors for a while. Because certainly things do change, um, and it's really important. So Sarah, if, if you're aware of other documents or anybody else, I know everybody will be, um, really, uh, pleased to receive them because an amalgamation of all of them is, is going to go as to the best possible practice, which is, you know, what we're aiming for.
Thanks, Wendy. Thank you. The importance of being open minded really, uh, quite fundamental here. So I appreciate, uh, those suggestions. Uh, councillor Kennedy?
Uh, yes, thanks, Chair. I, I was very interested in what Chris was saying about the line manager, um, signing off the declaration of interests. And, uh, then my mind immediately went to, well, who is my line manager? And whether there would be something similar in, in place for, for councillors? Because I think councillors would, would welcome, or should welcome anyway, being able to discuss through their forms. It looks a very easy form to fill in, but actually I think it's, it's, it's not that easy. Um, there's a lot of stuff to read around it, um, and it would be helpful, in my view, if there was somebody councillors could, could talk, uh, through the form that they'd actually filled in, um, as they were presenting it or before they were presenting it, uh, and delivering it to the, you know, committee services. Or perhaps it would be somebody in committee services or the legal department or something like that. It's, uh, I think councillors would welcome, uh, that kind of support, uh, for this particular document. Uh, I don't know if Chris has any comment on that.
Um, well, there is guidance on the, the, for the, the documents. Um, and my recollection is when we have the induction of new members. Um, Michael has a whole lot of forms that he had an induction pack on the night of the elections. We go scrambling down for, for those that have been elected to office and give them basically a doorstop, if you recall, the night when it happened. And some of that is, here's your training over the next six days. But certainly when you come to the form, because in reality, Michael usually goes through the form because Michael loads it up on the, on the internet for yourself as members. So we can give guidance, that's fine. But it's a bit different than the line manager scenario though, Malcolm, in that, in that the, the line manager issue is, here's an interest I've got as Chris Walsh, so Jeanette's my line manager. I don't think I've got a conflict, but it's interest that's going in the form. It's for Jeanette to decide as the councillor whether I have or not, not for Chris Walsh to decide I have or not, if that makes sense. And that's the sort of, the two-stage process, but in some ways it wouldn't be for either me or Michael. We can give advice, but members' interest form and the way, and what they register is a matter for themselves. All we can do is give advice. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Chris. Wendy?
Yeah, to start on that and particularly on, on the members stuff, when obviously people, um, are updating the forms and need to update the forms every time that there's a change in those circumstances. And certainly, you know, because people, um, are usually, you know, sort of have another look at them pre and post the AGMs as well. Uh, we will be giving guidance, um, to groups, um, well, certainly the Labour group will, and I'm sure the other leaders will, uh, through to their members in respect of, you know, it's important if in doubt, put everything on. And if you feel there is an actual conflict, um, discuss it with your whip. That is the appropriate person. If they're unsure, then they can take, um, again, as Chris has just said, uh, if there's particular legal advice. If you are unsure about something, don't, you know, don't do it. Um, or, you know, take advice before you do. And, and that is our, you know, policy going forward. That, you know, certainly declare everything. What, what we do have is obviously we've got our local neighbourhood funds and other stuff. So it's really important not just to be putting, um, council appointments down. It's really important to put in those interests, any committees that you sit on, that might be as a resident. You might have already been on that committee, uh, before you became a councillor. You know, some people sometimes are linked to schools, either as a school governor through a PTA. But because they may receive funding in some way and you may be linked to them, just, just so you're registering, not that you have a pecuniary interest in that particular thing. But, you know, the thing is, if, if you put everything down, it's there, if, if you're unsure in relation to whether you should be going to a certain meeting or whether you should still sit on a body or something like that, take advice from your whip, um, from the legal team in the council and, or, and also, um, you know, your leader of your particular group, um, rather than not be sure about that. I think that's the most important thing.
Thanks, Liam. Did you want to come back in?
Well, I, I presume those, those pieces of advice will be issued within the, the codes, uh, the, the, as they are updated as, as we go along. I have a feeling, we're, we're talking, Chris was talking about new councillors, you know, um, and induction packs. And I think the comments being made through the, throughout the meeting that, um, things change over the years. And some of us have been on the council a, a bit longer and we may not have, uh, we may not have caught up with those changes in a sense. So that's, uh, I, I, I just make that, that comment, that, uh, that, that councillors need support as well. At least sometimes just help in thinking these things through. And Wendy's advice is, is, is solid, you know, um. But it, it just, uh, uh, it's going to be stressful, I think, for, for councillors moving, moving forward. And we need to be clear about what the culture is, what the culture should be and how they should act. And simple advice from Wendy there, if in doubt, declare, declare everything, even if you, uh, you don't think there's any conflict. If, if you think that potentially there might be, then, then declare it. But, uh, I think some of us, um, uh, are, are living in a different world than we lived in twenty years ago. And, uh, we, we need to, um, catch up with that quickly.
Thanks, Malcolm. Wendy, did you want to come back in there?
No, just to reiterate that, and I think it goes back to the point that I think I made earlier. I don't know whether it was in the opening remarks or in, in response to, uh, some what Chris or, uh, Tony had said. In, in respect of it, is that ongoing learning and training and development, you know, around things changing all the time? And I know as part of the member development training, all of the leaders have signed off to certain aspects of that training being mandatory for all councillors, um, going forward in that. And that a lot will be being kept, uh, and it will, will be much easier, obviously, once that training goes online and people can access it, you know, in their own time, the way, you know, sort of members of staff can go on the work, uh, the development, training and development website, you know, in that. So, you know, once that's up and running, there will be no excuse for people. But I know sometimes, you know, there may be training online, there may be documents. And the thing is, sometimes people just want to talk through, what does that mean for me? You know, what do I need to be doing when I go to that meeting? And that support is there. People just need to ask. There's no such thing as a stupid question if you don't know the answer to that question. So all we would ask is people to be open and honest. And if you're not sure, and it doesn't matter whether you've been a councillor two weeks or twenty years, you know, if you don't know the answer, make sure you ask so you're not placing yourself or others in a compromising situation.
Thank you. One question, if I may have, and I'm happy to direct that either yourself or Tony is, I think it's absolutely clear, training is the foundation for good scrutiny in terms of the insight it gives you into new issues and terms of the skills it gives you. But obviously with the best training mechanisms in the world, it is still incumbent on members to engage with that training. How do we stress the importance of that? I'm sure Tony might have something to say as well, but it'd be interesting to hear from your perspective, Wendy, and also from Tony's perspective.
Yeah, I mean, certainly in, in respect of, uh, as I've just said before, through the leaders' discussions in looking at, you know, this governance document going forward and our practices continually improving. You know, they have set, signed up to, you know, us making sure that there are certain aspects. And that's why, you know, the member development group, you know, are saying it's open for other people to attend, not just those who are on the group. And it's about that. These are the things that, you know, you may have to do either annually, six monthly. If new legislation comes in, you know, there will be certain things. It's not meant to be onerous. You know, and some people absolutely love training, so every training opportunity that comes up, they may take. But there will be certain key factors. I would say safeguarding is another one as well that really needs to be, you know, mandatory, uh, both for people to safeguard themselves as well as others. Um, and again, that needs to be refreshed. So I think there are a number of things that, you know, sort of on that programme that we would want all councillors to undertake. And that issue will be taken up with their individual groups if they're not accessing it, just like within the workforce. You know, members of staff, there will be elements of training that's mandatory. And obviously that would be brought up in their line management. So it'll be a similar thing, you know, in a sense of, you know, we're going forward, you know, with, with our, you know, one council approach and we should all, you know, sort of, um, engage with that and make sure that, you know, sort of, we are very open to being scrutinised, but also open to learning new ways of working as well. I think that's really important. Changes to couple, you know, if you're part of that change and you feel part of it, you know, people will embrace that more. So if that training is around things that people have asked for, if it's delivered in a way that is accessible, um, to them. You know, we all know councillors have very, you know, busy and hectic schedules, a lot working. The councillor life, you know, and, and fitting everything in and as well as training. And some people have to work up an evening depending on their occupation for planning for the next day. So, you know, certainly it's going to be made to be as accessible as possible. Um, but, you know, members' engagement in that is really important because if, if they help design it, it's going to be of a, a standard that is accessible to all, but also more likely to be taken up by all in a sense, because it, it, it's things that people want, want to learn and, and I want to update on. So, but again, that's a help from the talking, you know, we keep going back to that. If we feel the need to be fit up and there are other things that need to be added, you know, that's what each select committee as well as audit and governance should be picking up on in a sense of these are the areas of member development training. And likewise on the cabinet, I know people were talking before about different, we'll be raising these issues and every week, at least once a week, we're, we're having cabinet management meetings, which aren't around the cabinet's agenda to look at general issues. So these, these are issues that will be picked up. So the cabinet members can also, you know, raise issues that they're picking up via scrutiny, via their engagement, you know, with the workforce. It's really important for us as councillors that we're engaging with the workforce as we do, you know, in our everyday work. So, you know, we can pick those issues up as well, uh, to shape that plan going forward.
Absolutely. I think that's important because the training never stops. And you think about the Covid context, for instance, that a potentially, uh, training needs for some councillors, I'll give my behaviour, what's appropriate to behave from a more operational perspective during Covid. So I think acknowledging that and acknowledging the kind of breadth of the programme i- is really important. And important to protect the kind of integrity and scrutiny and, um, the integrity and reputation of elected members as well. So Tony, I think over to you because I think it is a really important question. I think Wendy's talked about co-opting the group leaders and encouraging kind of it to be relayed that way in terms of the importance of, um, training and for members to help shape their training, determine their own training needs and programme. How would you emphasise the importance of it for members?
Um, Chair, I, I, I just think this is absolutely vital and, and you both just touched on it there. The training itself is important, but it's actually the own, the collective ownership of the whole agenda. Uh, and it's about building a culture and a way of working where we make it really easy to do good things and really difficult to do things that aren't good. Um, right across the, the piece, I think that transparency is really, really important. Uh, and that applies to offices and members and to make, to, to, to get the council to where we want it to be. It requires, um, officers and members to work together and take collective ownership. The, the political element is what sets local government apart from the rest. It's its strength, not its weakness, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, and so we absolutely embrace the role of members as, as senior officers. But we need that transparency. We need that collective ownership. That means that to build that ownership, you can't tell people what to think and how to behave. You're really, it's really important that we create the conditions where people buy in, are able to comment, are able to, you know, as Wendy says, take ownership or, and, and, and shape that training agenda. But it is also about how we feedback, how we make sure that we shine a light on what's, what's happening. And, and, you know, I think I said at the last meeting, one of the key things in changing the culture is about transparency so that we can see what's happening. And that old adage that sunlight is the best disinfectant, that sounds pretty brutal, but I think in the current circumstances, that is really, really important. And I think that's incumbent on, on all of us to build good practice across officers, the, the officer side of the council and the member side, and how that comes together to, to make sure that we're all, you know, we're all properly held to account. And, and we build that. Because if we do that with the talent we've got in the city and the opportunities, it will fly. But things we, we've talked about regularly at, at statutory officers group is this, this isn't about stifling the organisation of bureaucracy. We use the term enough grip and it's back to this point that, sorry, that's my son knocking on the door, so please forgive me. Um, the, it's back to this point that, uh, we want good things to happen easily and, and things that are not good to not happen. And I think it's about just getting that balance right. And that's something we need to work on. We won't get it. And that's something we need to work on. We won't get it perfectly, perfect right from the outset. But working on this together, having these sorts of discussions on a regular basis and fine tuning and improving as we go along. We'll absolutely get there in my view.
Appreciate that, Tony. And Mars, do you check if your son's okay? And I'm going to bring in a councilal, but I've been waiting very patiently. Thanks Chris.
Thank you, Chair. Another thing that's pretty close to my heart, having been a teacher for 22 years. I did agree with everyone, I meant comments that they made, that how important it is. I was very interested in Malcolm's point about being a long-standing councillor. Because it is true, isn't it, that we get an awful lot of input when we first become councillors and I'm still grateful for that. But you can possibly get a bit complacent and sometimes left out of the loop about changes. So I love Wendy's idea of having checklists. I love the idea that we're going to have the training caught up on the internet so that we can check up on things if we want to. But the one thing that hasn't been discussed, but which I thought really was useful, was having a mentor at the beginning. I won't name names, but I found it really useful having a councillor mentor when I first came in. And I know through the women's group, we've always said that the women would be very willing to mentor other women coming on as new councillors. And even mentoring people who are on the panel, candidates. Because my overall observation is there's an awful lot to know as a councillor. It's really hard to get your head around it all. So we need as many support mechanisms as we can possibly put in place to help people deal with it all. So that's why I like the idea of Wendy simplifying it with checklist. Yeah, I think that would help a lot. And then if there's bits you don't know, we'd have the programmes all up online so we can go in and check things as and when we need them. Because you can't take it in, in your first year, not all of it. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, again, I think quite a powerful comment, Councilman, and I know it's about that honesty, about what support we do, even what training areas and developments areas there may be. Jane, if you can bring you in please?
Thanks Chair. It goes back to the issue, and Ted was raised before about transparency and what Wendy was talking about as well. And it's what's perceived, which is, is, and somehow step back outside ourselves and look at ourselves and say, okay, if I was a resident looking in on me, for example, in Everton, what would, what would it look like? And the more councillors get involved in their own communities that they represent and often live in, and the more they're embedded in their communities and the more difficulty is to be able to do that, but it's really important. And if you look at the registered interests, and it's, it's actually about pecuniary interest and prejudicial interest. And it isn't, and it's not our fault, but it isn't flexible enough to show at the moment, although we've all put in loads of stuff because we want to show what we're doing. And it, it isn't clear enough perhaps is the word then, around what can be perceived as an interest and what isn't prejudicial and or pecuniary. And I think we, we need to just keep a really close eye on that. And also I think it's useful to remind officers so that they can challenge us and we can remind them what, what we're involved in on a voluntary basis, helping out in the community. Another issue, which I think the actual mayor Wendy raised before as well, which I agree with is about the, the way that the Mayor neighbourhood funds and also the hardship fund is used and has been. It's so important that we have that on the ground in the communities. However, that can also be perceived as councillors are just backing what they want to back, when that isn't the case. But again, it needs to be looked at and be really, really transparent. So the more we can add that upon, on, on the net, the, the better really. And, and the final bit is again, what, what Wendy mentioned before about safeguarding. And it's interesting that over the last year, I, I quite regularly say to people, you realise that we haven't been DBS checked? And they look at me in absolute horror and they say, I thought, I thought all councillors were, had a background check on them. They know, know. So again, it's something that leaders are done, and we were discussing it in the, in the members' development group. But again, it's whether we want to go down that route or not. But the safeguarding is really, really important because we are in a position where we deal with a lot of influence, and which is, which is very sensitive. And to be reminded about the safeguarding, both for adults and children, is really important. I'll shut up now, Leon, because I realise I'm not actually a scrutiny member of the select committee. I'm in other roles, I won't be here at the end of the morning.
No, I think that was a very useful input and again, a collective reminder that scrutiny is incumbent on all of us, regardless of what positions we sit in. So I very much welcome those contributions, councillor Corbin. Wendy, do you want to come back in?
Yeah, to just start on the form, I mean, certainly because obviously we're updating a number of the practices at the moment. We've got our, obviously, our action plan, et cetera. And I have spoke with Chris in committee services in, you know, picking up some of the points that James just made, or the members have made when they're trying to fill in that form. And certainly in that draft of updates and stuff, that, that form will be updated. So because of what's not all so clear sometimes is when people put their on board, whether that's a paid role, an unpaid role, you know, that they're as a volunteer, you know, that there's lots of, you know, you could be just there as an observer at the board. You, you might be actually co-opted onto that board from the council. So it's just so people are clear on what your role, role is when you attend those meetings. You may be there as a parent, as I said, if it, if it's a school type thing, you might be a, a parent governor. A school's got no link really to your council role, but just so people know that. Because as we said, a lot of this stuff is around perception. Sometimes if people see you, you know, on, on a governing body, that's an easy one to do in that sense, you know. You may be on there because you are a parent of a child at that school, not in your role as a councillor particularly. So it, it's just so people are fully aware of the different roles that people take in their communities as well as being a local councillor. So we are going to look at that form, one, one to make it a bit more easy to fill in. And that's so people aren't leaving things blank because they're not sure that it's very clear. And that will come with the training as well, Malcolm, and then you said before, and even just doing spoof ones, the sort of various ones that people might put in where we can anonymise perhaps, you know, some councillors' forms, you know, change names and organisations and stuff, just to get where we see really good examples of those forms. Because, you know, if you're anything like myself, if it's a new form for you to fill in, actually seeing one that's filled in well really helps you and saves a lot of time.
I have a final question for Chris, which I'll ask now and then I'll ask perhaps some of the members who've yet to contribute, perhaps if they have some thoughts or queries for Chris or Tony. But my question for Chris is specifically, we talked about this being a living document, a working document. Firstly, what other select committees will be seeing this document? And how do you envisage in practical terms elected members having the ability to shape this document and define what it looks like?
All, all members are invited to this select committee. So it's not just the members of the committee, all members of the council, so they can actually attend. Maybe what I was thinking we'll do, Leon, is the, the chairs group, the overview scrutiny group, we put the plan to that next session so we can have a discussion between the other relevant chairs to see what other select committees want to see. One thing that strikes me is we'll probably have about six or seven. Six will be one, reports on these quarterly governance updates from each of the directorates. Well, obviously, if you get the lot in this select committee, that's one thing. But some of those directorates feature scrutiny at the relevant select committee, so that's one thing. But we can have a discussion at the chairs group around, I'll put the paperwork that we've had to date in this update to that session. Or maybe we'll ask the chairs, what would you like to see? Certainly that's one thing for me. There's no reason why the members of that committee shouldn't see that quarterly governance update from the relevant directorates.
Okay, thanks Chris. And perhaps one for Tony, have the inspector team given any indications on their thought on the plan?
Not directly at this stage, Chair. They've, they've asked questions of, you know, they met, for example, the statutory officers group this morning to observe how we were working, and we picked up some key elements of this. And they're having lots of meetings, asking questions, I'm getting feedback from the inspector. I think they recognise that some of their suggestions we've already picked up and incorporated into the plan, which is positive. I'm pretty sure they'll tell us if they think we're on the wrong track, they won't wait until they publish their final report. Because the, the lead inspector very helpfully has made it clear that they aim to support the council's improvement journey. But they haven't directly given us any feedback at this stage. But as I said, I'm pretty sure if we're, if we're missing something significant in their view, they will tell us straight away.
Yeah, I feel that is a reasonable assumption. Are there any further questions? Chris, are there any further closing comments?
No Chair, just as you've indicated in the notes, we'll, we'll update at every session we're, we're at with this plan. Maybe the next version of it as well. So some of the stuff in the actions are coming to your 25th February meeting.
Okay, thanks very much. If there are no further questions, I'd always encourage members to ask as many questions as they can. Okay, if there are no further questions, can I move that we note and endorse the action plan on the basis that we will, as Chris says, continue to see regular progress updates in the coming weeks? Is that agreed?
Great, good news.
Agreed. Malcolm, are you indicating, sorry, at this point?
No, I was, I was just using that as a way of voting.
It is okay. So certainly Malcolm's agreed. Malcolm's given us the thumbs up, the hands up in that case. Okay, thank you then. Okay, thanks to Chris, thanks to Tony, thanks to Wendy on that. Okay, we're going to move members' attention then to item number four, this is our Treasury interim report for financial year 2021. And that can be found on the supplementary agenda, pages 14 to 25, if we can direct members' attention there. Can I refer us to that report now? I set off on those pages. And then if I can ask councillor Wendy Sam to introduce the report and comment please.
Thanks Chair. As members are aware, the city council's financial reporting and governance procedures require our chief financial officer to make regular reports throughout each financial year, including in relation to treasury management. The report that's before you all this evening is in the form of an interim assessment of treasury activity and accompanying treasury management prudential indices for the first six months of 2020-21. The report meets the requirements of both the SIPF code of practice on treasury management and the SIPF Prudential Code Capital Finance in Local Authorities. It's really important to note that the city council is required to have regard to those codes through regulations issued under the Local Government Act 2003. Thanks Chair.
Thank you very much. Do you members have any questions in relation to the report?
Okay. Yeah, come on, this is the Treasury interim report.
Please, please, yeah.
Yeah, so paragraph 16, I, I was just hoping that an officer could confirm. The, the Chancellor's introduced a prohibition on denying access to borrowing from the public works loan board for any authority which has the purchase of assets for yield in its three-year capital programme. I appreciate that money is fungible, but does this mean then that if, surely this means the vast majority of councils are now going to be prohibited from using the public works loan board generally? Is, is that, or is that not the case?
I mean, just in terms of the terminology potentially, and perhaps Tony, you perhaps demystify purchase, purchase of a particular class of assets, what might that mean? What might that look like?
I, I think you'd be much better advised to ask Pete to cast it on that question, Chair. I could have a good go at it, but Pete will have a much better go at it than me. So why don't we, we ask Pete to come in as our finance expert?
Please Peter.
Yeah, I mean, the restrictions around, as, are on investments for yield. So thi- this doesn't sort of restrict councils accessing, you know, funds for regeneration projects. So that's not restricted. It's, it's tended to focus on those investments which have been out of borough and which have done purely for yield purposes. But the regeneration projects, they're, you know, they, there's still access to PWLB borrowing for those purposes.
Well, that's what we're here for now. We're talking about the projects that are purely for yield, out of borough. That includes in categories of project under a commercial property investment fund, for instance.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah.
There is no, sorry.
And so, so for example, Chair, there are regeneration projects that are commercial projects the council may invest in. But our purpose for doing that is regeneration. This is the point about it being within the city. So if we, if we go back a few years, an example of that might be the arena, it could be the spine of Paddington Village, which is under construction at the present time. The purpose of the council being involved in that wasn't primarily about a commercial return to the council. It's to build employee, a high-quality employment space to generate jobs as part of the Paddington Village regeneration within the knowledge quarter. And I think as long as we can make the case for that, then we can access public works loan boards. But some councils have invested heavily commercially in things like solar farms, in office developments that are not in their, in their burrows or not in their, in their districts or cities in order to generate, to supplement their, their income. And whilst that's a, you know, a valid strategy, they manage risk and settle. The government are saying is they won't be allowed to use public works loan board for that sort of investment going forwards.
And presumably in the context of Covid, depending on the nature, the portfolio potentially one that leaves you incredibly exposed financially.
Very, very much so. And again, there's, there's people who are more expert at this than me. But if you are looking at commercial investment, a balanced portfolio in different asset classes is really, really important and a different level of risk as well. So that you don't put all your eggs in one basket is, is pretty sound. And Pete, Peter can give a view, but I think the council invests almost exclusively in the city and is quite balanced in terms of the types of assets that we have.
Yeah, I mean, the capital programme sets out the, you know, the investment, the capital investments. And that will come to this committee next month. So the council will be, so the committee will be able to see the sorts of investments the, the council is doing around Paddington Village. And they're almost, well, they are exclusively within the city boundary.
Well, Robert, what do you think?
Yeah, so reading paragraph 16, it kind of gives the impression that if we have even one investment for yield in our portfolio over, over the next three years, then that would rule out any other investment, any other taking out loans from the public works loan board. So I, I guess my question is, do we, do we have anything in our three-year plan at present? And would that rule out further borrowing for other projects which aren't related to that for you?
There's no investments in the capital programme outside the city currently.
Can't counter, Robert, I think we are just supporting what Peter's saying. I think we're on solid ground on this one. I think the wording in paragraph 16 perhaps could be a little bit more precise. And then Peter's definition was, was more accurate that it is to prevent out of, out of area commercial investment. That isn't something that we're planning to do, so we're on solid ground. But as I said, I think the wording in paragraph 16 could have been a little bit more precise.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I'm aware that there's been speculation about the Bank of England reducing the base rate to a negative figure. I was wondering if we had any plans in place for if that was to happen? I know it's speculative, I know it's never happened before. What would we do? Would it have an impact on our treasury strategy?
Well, it would, obviously we give returns, our, our investment returns. I mean, we're watching it, I mean, our, our advisers are close to telling us interest rates will be low for a number of years. They're not predicting they'll go negative at, at, at this moment, but they will remain low for the next few months. That's what the prediction is. You know, we're, we're looking, you know, the returns from short-term investments and cash investments is, is low, very low at the moment.
And Robert, what's the average length of our short-term investments?
It, it depends on our cash position. So, you know, we, we borrow money, you know, up to a year, you know, in short-term, but it can be even shorter than that. You know, we can do three months, six months. But, you know, that, that's, that's a period. It's not restricted to a specific period. It it's not restricted to a specific period, it depends on our cash flow requirements.
Oh, for Robert, if I may, um I read just, I inserted your second question as being, and correct me if I'm wrong, but are we prepared for the eventuality of negative interest rates? Would that be a a way of reflecting it?
Yeah, that that would be part of what I would ask him, yeah.
So I think the question perhaps is not so much, are we, do we need to be?
It it will impact on our on our returns, so yeah, I mean, you know, they're currently low anyway. Um so, you know, it'd just be part of our our forecast, we take it into account. Um you know, going forward and the financial impact. Um it won't be too significant in terms of what we invest. It's more the borrowing rates, you know, we we obviously borrow a lot more than we invest. So um that, you know, they're the key rates to us.
Would that be an upside?
Yeah, I mean, potentially, you know, they've lowered the P W L B rates. Remember, they had, they put it up a hundred basis points. Um and they've lowered it again, so that's had a positive impact um going forward in terms of the capital financing costs.
I I do appreciate that in the grand scheme of things, the um the investments that we make from treasury holdings, you know, in the grand scheme of things, it's not a massive amount. But um do we still have a benchmarked figure for what we expect to to return in a year? And how are we doing against that benchmark?
We we have a budget in in, you know, and and we're we're currently on track to to meet that budget in terms of the investment return. Um so we're currently on track this year and and we we should meet meet that budget, that income budget.
All right, thank you very much. I'm done, I'm done.
Jane, from excellent questions there. And thanks for the answers, Peter, very comprehensive. Do we have any further questions arising from members? Councillor Maitenson, any questions? No? Okay. Well, if there are no further questions arising in respect of that report, can I move that with note and endorse that report? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, okay. Just in terms of the remaining items on the agenda, there needs are purely information items at this stage. The remaining items included, those being agenda items five, six, A and B, are at this stage for information purposes only in anticipation of these being submitted for consideration and scrutiny at this stage. Can I ask that members take the opportunity to review these reports with the views of raising any specific questions at our next meeting of the committee? And we will not be reviewing or debating matters relating specifically to the reports this evening. Of course, questions will be raised, circulated and answered at the next meeting. Are members okay with that approach?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much if that's the case. Okay then, as ever, thanks to all members of the committee for your constructive engagements and comments this evening. I think we've all agreed there's been some, you know, quite thoughtful scrutiny and I think some some good guidance as to how we move forward. Certainly, we've set out the plan for February and March meetings. So please, people do be thinking about what you want to see on Investalair, what you want to see, questions regarding children's services, what you want to think of company's governance. Because of course, those items will be coming up in February and March. So thank you, of course, to the officers, thank you, of course, for Mike. Thank you, of course, for all your patience with my technical issues at the start. Thanks to all of the officers in attendance, thanks to the members, and thanks to all of those who watched this evening's proceedings online. And I now say thank you and immediately.